Well, I find myself in, and Executive Session would have been a lot easier. Okay, let's take...I mean, if you take one person, and just because you don't vote for them doesn't mean you don't like them.
Right.
I mean, this, you know, how does something so simple turn into such a conundrum?
Yeah, I suggest that we award the, whatever this is, to all the people that were nominated. Either total, or the ones that were spoken for by the council. It says we can make multiple.
How many were spoken for?
Hmm?
How many were spoken for all of them?
Amongst us, Weldon Marson, Rodery, Christina, and Roger, and Gar.
Um, I believe I have a motion.
I'll make the motion clear. Let's give a, uh, recognize the efforts of all of these people.
I'll second that.
Is that the five people that were mentioned?
No, all of them.
Everyone.
All of them on here?
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries.
So, Mayor, what we would like to do then is we can, on the next agenda or two agendas, notify each of these individuals and have them come in and have a more formal handshaking photo opportunity. And they would like a resolution, the Spirit of America Foundation would like a resolution recognizing these individuals, and we could have that on a future agenda if you'd like.
Item 5B, Honorary Mayor Oral Recognition to Robert Bichlowski. Uh, the council received a very nice handwritten letter from Robert. He, Robert, is a one-hundred-year-old war veteran who lives in an assisted living center, I believe in Wisconsin. And, uh, P.S., I'll be a hundred and one on April fourteenth. He, uh, was in Maine once during his life to pick up a destroyer in, um, Bath, Maine. And he was part of the Fifth Fleet with Bell Halsey's group, and went to Tokyo, Japan, and after two years of service returned home. The purpose of his handwritten letter was his great concern for the amount of snow that we had in Arushka County, and he wanted to know how we survived. Uh, the council has put together a nice handwritten letter in return, and I will read the last paragraph of the letter. We have a, uh, dear, it's ha, it's on the third page. "We have a city council form of government. We are a seven-member board elected by the citizens of Caribou, Maine, Maine's best hometown. However, we are always looking for individuals who will help make our community even better. I presented your name and handwritten letter to the Caribou City Council, and they are going to vote for you for the position of honorary mayor. We are a conservative bunch. The pay is not that good. However, you're allowed to have all the ice cream you want if you should ever visit Caribou, Maine." Dennis has put together a great little, um...there you are. Honorary mayor that, uh, we would like to present. Chair will entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded to make Robert Bichlowski a honorary mayor for the city of Caribou. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Robert also wanted to have our local news town, newspaper sent to him, and what do you know, it happens to be the one with the state champs right on the front. He's gonna get an eye-opener when we, when we do that, and if we could tell Robert how he can look us up on YouTube, uh, in the packet that we send him, it would be great. And, uh, I'm sure the ladies in the assisted living center would be more than willing to help him. Thank you very much. Item number 6A, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Renewal of Liquor License. Moscato's Italian restaurant at Sixth Center Street.
This, um, liquor license is a renewal, and it was, um, reviewed by the code enforcement and the chiefs, and they have signed off on it as being, um, okay.
Any ques, well, yeah, any questions?
Motion to renew the liquor license.
Second. Moved and seconded to renew the liquor license. Any questions, concerns? All those in favor? Motion carries. 6B, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Sale of Tax-Aquired Property Located at Thirty-Seven Home Farm Road. Dennis? Or Carl?
So this, uh, property was tax-acquired in November. Uh, we received full payment in the mail after the January thirty-first deadline. Um, so if you accept this, um, payment, it's paid in full for the last three years. We also have a, uh, quick claim if you do approve it.
Motion to accept payment.
Thanks, sir.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Questions? All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you very much. 6C. Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Extension of Ordinance One: A Moratorium on Marijuana Establishments.
Sure.
Um, we, we found out, uh, on, on December, I think thirteenth, that the new medical marijuana's, uh, statute came in, into effect at about the same time that we had, uh, interest i- in the, in the community to do some permitting. In that time, we thought that, that where it was a brand-new, brand-new regulation set, set before us, that, that we would enter into a moratorium. Basically, the moratorium allows, um, the state has, has recognized municipal rights to local control, and so they've given us some guidelines that we may choose to accept. Um, basically, the, the decision is to opt-in and, and then, uh, put language into our code that allows, uh, storefronts, manufacturing, uh, large-scale cultivation and things like that of medical marijuana. Or the other option is, is to do nothing, and really, the default is opt-out. And, um, however, if you choose to opt-out, that's not to say that Mr. Walker cannot conduct his medical marijuana caregiver business, including the cultivation of that product that he needs for his clients. So basically, I think that the moratorium extension would allow us time, uh, to figure out whether to opt-in and come up with regulations to help us, uh, regulate. Regulations like placement and zoning, regulations like fees and permits, that would all have to be written and added into our language. Or if we, like I said, the, the council could choose just to, uh, do nothing, which is considered an opt-out. And in that case, the, the medical marijuana dispensaries and caregivers registered and already approved will continue as grandfathered, and the medical marijuana caregivers, uh, will go along their business and, and do what they do.
Is that how you understood it, Mayor?
And, uh, just to be clear, the, the moratorium does not, uh, prevent a caregiver from operating in Caribou. And this only addresses cultivation facilities or manufacturing facilities or a marijuana, medical marijuana retail store. So these are things that are above and beyond a caregiver's operation for their clients. And so it, it sounds like, based on the, uh, earlier comment during the public forum, we may need to sit down and revisit, what is the business model? What is there, things that they're doing, so we can make sure if, if they do fly under this moratorium, that we facilitate them, you know, to move forward. But the way the state is handling all these definitions for all these different types of marijuana recreational or medical storefronts versus dispensaries versus manufacturing facilities, we're trying to get a grasp of all of this, and even the state's kind of recognized, what did we do? And so we're trying to address all of these things, also watching to see what happened in legislature this year. But, uh, as I said, the moratorium right now does not prevent a caregiver from coming into Caribou and opening up their doors. But if they get into the, the cultivation aspect of it under the definitions of the state or the manufacturing, those are the things we're saying, we're not ready for those types of usage yet until we figure out what our regulations are going to be around them.
So, can Mr. Walker do his thing or not? They're sounding both, uh, you're saying he can, but then you're saying production and cultivation and manufacturing. I mean...
Any caregiver would have a cultivation facility, one plant growing in a cultivation facility.
The, the state defines things differently from cultivation facilities versus medical cultivation or marijuana, medical and manufacturing. And so that's, we're just trying to make sure we have in our own regulations that we've addressed all of the new definitions and all of the new things that they've said. These are what the cities need to address.
Are they, are they still saying this, or did they say it in December?
This was in December.
Well, how many months does it take?
That's, yeah, that's, that was gonna be my point. We, we gave you sixty days, guys. Time's up. We're behind the eight ball now. We have people, uh, they're sitting in this audience that would like to bring tax money to this town, that would like to have caregivers. There's a certain way to do it, but we've got to follow a timeline, guys. And I, I feel bad for some of these people. I mean, no way around it. It's legal in Maine.
Joe?
Um, the one on the Prestall Road, does he cultivate, or is that?
A different foundation.
That's a, that's a medical dispensary, which is another.
And there's actually no limits on how big a dispensary can be, that can grow as many plants as long as they have.
So he, is he growing his own, or is...
I'm not sure where he grows, but somewhere else.
They grow off-site, and, and actually, that business is the only approved
Right.
medical marijuana business of that type in the community.
Um, yes, so, and yours is medical as well?
So that, I mean, just to give you an idea, a caregiver that wants to grow their own plants for their own client, their own patients, okay? That's one thing. If a caregiver wants to now start cultivating in that, under the definition of the state law, cultivating means that you're now harvesting plants and you're selling them to other caregivers or dispensaries. It's no longer just for your patients. That's then a cultivation facility.
Under the new law, up to one-third of any caregiver's, uh, product can be sold to another caregiver?
So, again, these are some of the things we've got to make sure we have clear in our own regulations, so that we are regulating appropriately under the state law.
And, and it's not that we haven't done anything in sixty days. We, we've been looking at what the rest of the state's trying, we're all trying to do this at the same time across the state. So we've got sample language from everywhere, from Sanford to South Portland to Belfast to, um, you know, basically, I don't know if there's a race to be the first one to test this in court. So, right now, in our code, there's nothing that allows me to approve or disapprove this kind of activity.
What does that mean? Why would you, can Ted go buy that building and start doing what he does?
He can conduct his medical caregiver activities.
And are we gonna come back later and say, oh, we have this, this, and this now, or?
Kind of depends on the state and their regulations that they, they put forward.
I thought they came out in December?
No.
They, they're still changing, and they'll, they'll evolve through two thousand and twenty-one, when they'll, uh, eliminate the number of dispensaries, so there'll be as many dispensaries as there are people that are willing to risk that kind of business.
Can, can I ask Mr. Walker?
Absolutely.
How many patients do you, how many plants would you need?
I can have thirty-six flowering plants and, like, unlimited seedling, uh, twice as many, seventy-two, uh, immature plants. And that is the maximum any caregiver can have, is five, up to five patients. Whereas a dispensary can have unlimited patients.
So what's your long-term goal? I mean, that's a big building.
Right. Within the plant count rules, I'll be able to, you can, so the whole plant count thing is kind of not a good way to, it really shouldn't be square footage, but that's on the state level. Because you can grow a plant this big, or you can grow it ten feet tall. So the plant count number is kind of archaic in its attempt to regulate the size. So, but I'll be able to utilize the building within my limits, more so than what I'm doing now. So, but I'll be able to utilize the building within my limits more so than what I'm doing now inside the house.
Joan?
Okay. It's not illegal for him to do that, right?
No.
And you're not gonna arrest him if he does it? Okay, so if he does that, is the code enforcement gonna go to him and say, hey, you're gonna be fined, you're gonna cease and desist or something like this?
No, there's nothing in my code that says that I can approve or disapprove this activity, except that if he needs a plumbing permit, I'll have to go go and check that out, you know?
The whole building doesn't have any heat, so they will need a form of that.
But you're not gonna say, no, you can't have a plumbing permit because you're gonna have a medical dispensary here? Are you gonna, are you not gonna let him have a?
Well, no, if he needs a plumbing permit, go make sure the plumbing's taken care of, right, then.
Right, okay.
That's why you pay for a permit.
I guess what I'm getting at is if he goes ahead and does what he wants to do, there's not a whole law right now, whether we adopt this, whether we, whether we extend the moratorium or not, he can pretty much go and do what he wants to do anyway?
He can get doctors' medical marijuana caregiver activities.
Okay.
We're more concerned about storefronts and stuff, right?
Right.
Yeah.
And if he wants to open a store,
For retail.
He has to come for permits to do that? Let's say a year from now, he wants to open a store up there.
Right now, the only regulation we have on this is the regulation we wrote for the dispensary on Route One. And we have the the total ban on retail sales.
Yeah, okay.
But now the state has said there's a different classification of storefront type of businesses. There's recreational retail sales, but there's also now a medical marijuana retail sales. Which is, we have to regulate that differently if we're gonna regulate that. And that's where our codes are right now signed up.
And we already, we already have a business doing that and we don't have code?
No, the dispensary is a different animal.
You you actually wrote, or a council actually wrote that language that allowed that dispensary to take place.
So if I go into your, your place up there, can I buy marijuana from you?
Not unless you have a.
A prescription.
And I won't, I won't be having people, it's not gonna be a retail spot.
Okay.
It's gonna be private.
That's where I'm trying to get it, okay. Because we have a moratorium on retail sales of marijuana in this area for non-medical and stuff like, there's no place that you can go in and buy a plant. Because you can grow your own anywhere, so you you can have in the state minimum rate up to six plants per person, per personal person growing in your house.
Where do you get them?
I can gift you some. I can gift you some.
Which you can, I mean, the law says.
Hey, fifty years ago, I'd be right sitting there.
Okay. Any other questions from the council? Hearing none.
I have one.
Oh, go ahead, Nick.
Are you okay with what's?
Yeah, I mean, I'm gonna go forward and do it.
Okay.
I I just have one more, Mr. Mayor.
Tom?
The smell of this product obviously is, and and meetings passed.
Ken, can you move to the left?
Oh, I'm sure. The smell of this product, in past meetings, when I was on the planning board and even in this room, in this council chamber, we've talked about the smell. What are you gonna do to mitigate that?
A thousand yards from the next building, so.
Wind, wind blows, man.
Yeah, well, there's also filters too, but my, my whole point of moving into a more professional facility is the room that a plant is gonna be in is completely sealed from the outside. All recirculated, so air will hardly even get out of there except for opening the door to walk in. But there can be further filtration to carbon filters to get rid of the smell.
So there are filters that you can purchase in order to get rid of the smell? Okay. I think if we were to write something or if Ken, you were to write something, Dennis, might be something to think about.
Okay, any other questions, concerns? Chair will entertain a motion. I do not hear.
A motion and it dies.
I motioned to not extend the moratorium.
Uh, that's not how we do it.
No?
No, no, we don't make a motion not to do anything. We just don't do it.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I would make a motion to go ahead and extend the ordinance for three months. Because he's gonna do what he wants to do and nobody's gonna bother him anyway, right? And is that, Ken, is that what you'd like to see done is to extend this for three months?
Actually, this is your decision whether you wanna opt in or go with with the default, which would be opt out.
Opting in means to extend it?
Opt in means that you would like to make arrangements to allow storefronts
Retail sales.
And manufacture and retail sales of medical marijuana.
Marijuana.
Just so you know, also recreational marijuana, there's not been one legal sale of that yet. It's not even into effect. If that's unclear for anyone.
This, this ordinance would be for sixty one days, right? It wouldn't be three months.
And it would not allow retail sales of marijuana?
Well, we have an ordinance already in place that prevents that.
Right, okay.
This one would prohibit medical marijuana retail sales.
But that's not.
Which is not what he's doing.
I guess my problem really is the definition of cultivation facility, because that's what it says and that kind of encompasses everything by saying a cultivation facility, in my opinion, in the moratorium.
Which is the the state's definition.
Yeah, I'm I'm not familiar with the state's definition of that.
Well, again, basically, if you are, if your sole purpose in cultivating the plants was to be able to sell it to other caregivers, dispensaries, manufacturers, then you're a cultivation facility. But if you're cultivating yourself for your patients,
Right.
you're not a cultivation facility.
So is this?
The state's definitions are causing us to have to try to split hairs and try to figure it all out. That's why we're, we would recommend that you extend this for another sixty days so we can.
Can I ask a question real quick? Does, do our legislatures know what type of position they're putting us in down here at the municipal level? They do, chief? And have you talked to a couple of them and how how often?
That's why it's been going on for two years.
Do they, now, Ken, you said maybe twenty twenty one before they get through this?
Twenty twenty one.
That's the next change. So we'll transition into this situation where there's no longer a limit on how many dispensaries that there'll be allowed. Right now, they allow eight. We've got one. In twenty twenty one, there'll be no limit of dispensaries. Anyone, any entrepreneur company that wants to make that risk, it opens that kind of business.
Oh, the only, one more question that I have is what's gonna change in sixty one days?
The language has already been drafted for the planning board to review. And so it's part of the delay has been the notification process that we have to go through to have a public hearing before then, have their public hearing, their review, make a recommendation to you, bring it to you for consideration. It's just within our own ordinances, we have these timelines that we have to do. But the language has been drafted now and we can have this here.
I could, I could go on about this, but.
Okay, now, where were we? Joan, did you make a motion?
I will make a motion that the city council reenacts ordinance number one, two, twenty nineteen series with an effective date of March fifteenth, twenty nineteen.
Motion's made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moving and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Those opposed? Five to two. The motion fails. Thank you very much. Six D. Discussion and possible action regarding resolution three, one, two thousand nineteen, mending a policy for sale of tax acquired property. Dennis?
We have a policy that was adopted by the city council several years ago, which outlines the procedures that we will have to go through with tax acquired property in order to get it back on the tax rolls. And the state last year made a change to that process. If somebody qualifies, then we have to go through a process of listing the property for sale through a real estate agent and trying to get fair market value for it. The city then is able to collect off of the proceeds what we need for reimbursement or or full compensation of taxes owed. And anything that remains is to be given back to that previous property owner. And so this resolution effectively amends our policy to now include reference to that procedure for those that qualify. And so the specific language that's added is except that the municipal officer, officer, sorry, municipal officers shall use the special sales process required by thirty six M R S A nine forty three C for qualifying homestead property if they choose to sell it to anyone other than the former owners.
Motion to accept. The amending the city, motion to accept to amend the city tax acquired property's policy in accordance with the state of Maine.
Second. Moving second to accept, Hugh.
So the change is if you're gonna sell it to somebody other than the previous owner, you have to go through a real estate agent? Is that the change?
Only if the previous owner would qualify for this process under the state law.
The legislature is looking at repealing that law that they passed last year.
Need a one? Unintended consequences?
Again, whatever, yes.
Any other questions or comments?
So if it gets repealed, we'll just have to change it again?
May or may not. If they repeal it, they'll just repeal that and the language will stand referring to a particular body of laws.
Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Six E. Discussion possible action regarding non-union employee wage policies. Dennis?
So this has been going on for several years now and in, I guess it was November or December last year, previous council said we didn't wanna go with all the language that had been drafted up to that point. We need to make it simpler and try to figure out, as I understood it, come up with a range in which all the positions would be hired in. And that the range, we would look at their individuals qualifications for where to place them in that range at start. And then the council said that you would look at possible COLAs or merit based systems or longevity based systems after that. And so at this point, really, I guess the discussion is what's the most appropriate way to determine the range for each position? And there are different sources that we can look to to define the range. The U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, they publish national standards and also by state as to what the ranges are for certain positions. Some of the concerns are that it's it's maybe not as in depth as we'd like it to be. You also have the Maine Municipal Salary Survey. They publish a range as well for each of the positions. Some of the concerns being that we don't have a complete picture of municipalities in case not everybody responds to that salary survey. And then, of course, as a city, we could always go out and and just contact cities that we want to poll and say, what are your, what are your wages, what are your ranges for different positions? I guess tonight, one of the things I wanted to just work through the council on is was a short exercise in in looking at, as we go out and we start looking at all the data that's available in the different sources, do we want to look at constraining that data a little bit? Or we wanna try to narrow down our focus? And three questions, I guess, I sent out to you to get your feedback on, is as we look at the different communities that are around us, which is most important for a comparison? Their their population, their, maybe their distance away from Caribou? Or the valuation of that community is how alike are they? Those, those three criteria are the ones that we've talked about in the past. I guess I'm just trying to understand the council's position on these three characteristics of which ones are the most important as we start reaching out to analyze the data that's out there. So this, you had this in your packet. If you wanna finish filling out this questionnaire and send it to me, we can do that tonight or we can do it another night and I can compile all the results and get that back for another discussion tomorrow.
I have a problem with the second question. How can you compare community valuations if you're not comparing the populations? I mean, I'm sure Portlanders work a little bit more than we are. I mean, I don't know how to answer that.
Well, valuation really is looking at if, I guess, in a sense, their ability to fund.
Yeah.
All right.
But I mean, if you can have some towns with the same population and one town's poor and the other one's not.
Right. And so it's it's really, it is a balance of, okay, if we're just comparing the population of the town to the valuation, and we're gonna say, we're gonna go out and compare ourselves to them, which is more important, their population or their valuation? And on that scale, that's where you and council say, well, we, if we're just comparing those two things, then this, this is the one that's gonna be more important to us out of those two.
I don't have it written. All I have is the tablet.
Okay.
I'll load on verse.
Any other questions? Yes. Is that all right? After the meeting?
Okay.
Tom?
I just have one question, just because, well, I'm young compared to you, so I. How did this all start, really? I mean, this evaluation of non-union employees? The way I was always raised, if you work hard and you do what what's expected of you or maybe a little bit more, you might get a raise. If you do what's expected of you or a little less, might not. How did this all come about?
So it it really is a, I think, a philosophy of a merit system versus a step system of compensation. Caribou has for many years incorporated a step system into its wage policy. And so the question has been, are the steps that are established, are they appropriate for the the wages of the market or for the comparison? And back back two thousand eight, nine, many years ago, the city hired a consultant group to come in and outline for us the best way to compare other cities. And it went through a, not to make light of it, but almost a twelve step program of these are all the things that you need to consider with every single position. Are they supervisory? Are they at risk? Are there educational requirements necessary? Are there financial implications of their duties? And went through this big checklist for every single position. And based on that, it gave them a score for their position. And then based on the score, that threw you into a certain step program. And then there was also of, well, are those steps appropriate? How are other people getting paid in equivalent positions in other cities? And do we need to start comparing ourselves to that so that we're not losing people? So it it really was, again, this, are we dealing with a step and a longevity issue or are we going to focus more on a merit based system? And if we go with merit, what are the review criteria for that being in place? What kind of supervisory responsibilities are there? What kind of questions are asked? What, are we very clear on all the duties that have been assigned and making sure we have everything in place for that? So that's really where we're at right now, is the the non-union employees. There's, it's just been more of a, well, what are all the other cities paying for those similar wages or for those positions? And are we being competitive with the other cities so that we're not losing personnel?
Okay, just one real quick question. How much do we pay this consulting company? Can you remember? It's just more curiosity. Three consultants?
I started in two thousand seven, and they were getting almost done at first thing. So it's been going for a while. And I didn't know the details of how it was put together.
Twenty-eight thousand for one, ten thousand for another one. Throw off the first one, second one. Didn't like that one. We tried to do it in-house.
Dare to say we've got close to fifty grand tied up into this thing? Over the years? Okay.
I think the council's direction before was something, we need to have something that's just very simple, straightforward, you know, it can be repeated. And so, for instance, if we're going to reference the main salary survey, then we need to just establish what the criteria is that we're referencing every year so that we know that that's what it's going to be. And we don't have to go out to consultants every time we need to then look at the wages.
Any other questions, comments?
I have a comment. This is meant to be a guide. There's meant to be flexibility in this when we get done. And I'm gonna go out on a limb and speak as an individual counselor right now and say, eventually, it comes down to the city manager deciding what a person gets paid in the non-union contract. So this is just meant to be a guide to go by. It's not written in stone, so to speak.
Any other questions, comments?
It's also not meant to be a decision on whether we're doing steps or merit pay right now. Right, not right now. This is just to see where everybody is compared to whatever the survey says we should go on.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much, and we'll fill this out and pass it in at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Six F. Discussion regarding city leases. This is something that, part of our understanding the budget, items that we'll have to go through later on in the year. We have many leases. And just meant for a quick, brief overview.
So at the request of the mayor, we pulled together the leases that we have. I think we're more familiar with the airport leases with the recent six bay tea hangar that was opened up in two thousand eighteen. And so right now, all of those tea hangers are rented out. We also have a land lease at the airport. Some of you may not be aware of that. Mr. Tom Getz has leased point zero five acres from the city. He has a twenty-year lease and built his own personal hangar on the property. The airport plan calls for providing similar opportunities to other pilots that might be interested in that. And that lease is expiring June first, two thousand twenty. I know that Mr. Getz has asked, is the council interested in renewing that? This is not for action tonight, but something that needs to be brought up another time. If we don't want to renew that, then the city has to compensate him for the shed so that we then are able to turn it around and lease it out to somebody else that might want it. And that's one of the strings with that lease. The tea hangers, we've leased those out, all in accordance with the city council-approved fee schedule. We have the lease with the National Weather Service that currently is a twenty-year term, and that expires in two thousand twenty-one. I haven't received any firm number back from N and A as far as how long we can have that lease in place if we want to renew it. We do have to provide a free place for National Weather Service at the airport. I'll follow up and see if there's anything wrong with going with a thirty or a fifty-year lease. But so far, they haven't responded back to my question with any definitive number. At sixty Access Highway, we have four leases. One is to Boat Prey Construction, two, the company that operates Sears in town. They have a lot of cold storage up there. County Bag is the largest leaseholder up there right now with eighteen thousand square feet. And their lease expires March first, two thousand twenty-two. And there's also, the RSU has requested to occupy about three hundred square feet so that they can store some of their science tables until the new school gets built. At this point, we've, I've informed them of what a rental rate would be if the council wants to charge that to them, or we could say, go ahead and use the space until you need it. It's only three hundred square feet out of the entire building. So if the council wants to give me some direction on that, we can go back to the RSU on it. See a comment coming?
I have, it seems three hundred a month for three hundred square feet and a hundred a month for eight thousand square feet. Whatever.
The direction has been to go to a dollar per square foot with the leases that come in, and so that's.
New leases from the other one will be a.
Dollar per square foot. The Lions Building, we do have Rustic EMS in there. They pay us about four thousand dollars a year. We also have the parking lots in the downtown area that are currently leased by Seitel on a ninety-nine-year lease. The Nylander Museum also has a very small tenant that's occupying some of the office space in the Nylander for a minimal fee, dealing with the Cary Medical Center. Needed some additional office space. And so we get some, in a sense, compensation from Cary to house one of their operations in the Nylander.
Dave? I have a big, big problem with the parking lots.
Can we, can we come back to that in just a minute? Would you mind?
No, as long as we talk about it.
Yeah?
No, we won't.
Okay. I could last a little bit.
So these are the revenue generating leases that we have as a city. We also have two lease obligations currently. One is the lease for the wood pellet boilers, and the other is a fire engine. The wood pellet boilers was a thirteen-year obligation. We make annual payments for, in a sense, the debt service that we have on those. That's, it's not going to exceed a hundred and twenty thousand a year, but between now and the expiration, it escalates up to that hundred and twenty thousand payment. So each year, that will go up a little bit, every year, until we make the final payment in two thousand twenty-five.
And it's thirteen years there, is it?
All right, we've already been paying on it for a while.
Joe?
There's some misunderstanding. These are not really leases. We did not lease these properties. We did not lease the fire truck. We did not lease the pellet boilers. We financed them.
Right.
I know, Mayor has brought that up, and other people have asked me, how come we're leasing property? We're not leasing, we're not leasing equipment. We're not leasing. These are finances, financing obligations that will be paid off, and this property will not be turned back in when the lease is up.
That's correct. When we use the term lease, it's from the municipal side, we call it a lease, but for all intents and purposes, it is a debt obligation that we have.
It's confusing to some people. Maybe leases are loans or something if they look at that, but.
The official documentation calls them leases, but it's not a lease in the true sense of you revert back to the previous owner when you're done with it. So you're right, the fire engine, we have payments on that, annual payments of a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, and that one expires in two thousand twenty-one. Under the capital improvement plan that was adopted by the council last year, we anticipate that that hundred and seventeen thousand dollars will get rolled into the payments for the pellet boiler so we can get that paid off sooner and have less interest payments for that and try to get out of debt on those lots sooner. We'll shave about two years off of those payments.
Okay, I have something I'd like to say on the, well, it's not a lease now, it's some other term. But first, Mr. Martin, you are finished with your, with the lease. Okay. Mr. Martin, you wanted to talk about parking lots.
Yeah. Supposedly, we now have leased land to Seitel. Well, in March of two thousand thirteen, fifteen, the manager came to us and says, I need a temporary lease because Seitel wants to get whatever done and da, blah, blah. Okay? And the intent of the council the whole time, always, was to sell those. And the last comment made in that meeting was Shane McDougall said, and then we're gonna sell them. And the answer was yes. Now, supposedly, there was a problem in the title to the land or something. Is that correct?
Yes.
Now, there was a, now, there's Caldwell's in the same piece of land. We sold them, or did we? Did we sell to Caldwell? Wardwell.
Wardwell.
I'm sorry. We did sell to them.
Yes.
So the first question, why is there a title problem on part of the lot, but not the whole lot? And secondly, I guess, we were never told that this is what happened. We assumed, the whole council, that by July, that was sold. The previous manager did not tell us otherwise. Now, legal or not, it's not very ethical. And what's to say that that problem can't be resolved? Is my other question. And what about the party that's interested in buying some of that now? So.
Okay, we have three questions that you've posed. Number one.
One more.
Okay.
Can we see a copy of the lease? I mean, who's gonna hot top and, this is it? Oh, thank you.
So now, let's go through the questions again. You wanted to know why we're not, we didn't go through with the sale?
Yeah. There were problems, but that doesn't necessarily, it looks like, I don't know, I don't know if the problem was set up, or I can't fathom Herschel Parking Lot has a title problem, but we sold part of it to Wardwell.
Name of finance.
Well, we really didn't. They made two payments, but they think they paid up what they were supposed to pay.
Two-year agreement was part of the sweep with them, believe me.
Okay. So we're gonna stick with the Seitel parking lot. Make, I guess the question is, did they, in fact, pay through the lease agreement what we were gonna sell the lots for? Assuming they've done that, then the question is, why haven't we just said, here, sign here, you own them? Right? Is that the problem? Why didn't we continue with what the council's wishes were? Can?
This is not the lease. This is the, this is the temporary lease.
Right, yeah, that's the.
Resolution authorizing the lease.
Well, I said, don't lease them.
Each one of those parking lots, we had to do a separate ordinance for each parking lot, correct? As we sold them, remember correctly? So there was one done for, initially for the Seitel, and then we did one for Herschel, and then we did one for the next one, and they all had to be introduced individually in the sale.
So can we then ask, as soon as I get another question one? So then we can ask Dennis to look into the issue of, number one, did we get the money that we thought we were gonna get just through the purchase by leasing it? And number two, why didn't we follow through?
Why weren't the wishes of the council followed?
You know, if they paid that, thirty-five thousand dollars?
Thirty-five or seventy-five.
They paid, I know that they paid two, they made two payments of seventy-five thousand dollars.
We'll get together on this at the next council meeting and get, and so those were the question one. The amount of money.
Did we get the money?
Pardon?
I'm trying, I wanna make sure.
Okay.
But the question's up.
The money, did we get the money?
Okay.
Sounds bad when I say it that way, but I don't know. And number two, why didn't we go through the process of then just turning it over to them so they owned it? Assuming we got the money.
I do know that in the purchase agreements, the buyer had the right of refusal based on title issues. And so if they saw an issue with the title, they could refuse the property.
I think Mr. Martin's point is excellent. Then how the heck can we sell it to the people, the same, the part of that same parking lot to the people next door? So either one or the other, something's not jiving here.
But again, you're dealing with different people in transaction. One could be comfortable with it, the other would.
Right, Wardwell's may not have had a title issue problem.
They may not have cared what it was.
If Wardwell doesn't have an issue, I don't have an issue, so sell it to Seitel.
Right.
Now, if they don't want it, then, what, we own it again? I mean, what are the options here? But it's clear from the notes that we've been sent that that was, what, where we are now was not the intent of the council then. Something happened in between that needs to be looked at. And it all starts with, what are the facts? Where are we standing now? So, Joan?
Well, and also to just add to Dave's, what he said is that the other parking lot in the other area apparently was leased as well, which there were no title issues. But there's one thing, in Dennis's email to us, you spoke to Austin, I guess, and he said that the city did not resolve the title problems, and so that's why this was allowed to go to, into a lease.
It was the city's responsibility to clear all the title issues.
But that was his responsibility, and he never told us that they didn't get resolved. I mean, it's just the ball dot drop. But the way it reads right here, it says that, "Any rent paid by Seitel Corporation to the city pursuant to the lease shall be applied to the purchase price of the said portion of the parking lots as contemplated by the purchase and sale agreement, which is reasonably expected to occur by July thirty-first." It doesn't say it has to be occur by July thirty-first. It looks to me like, when I read all this other part up here, well, if Seitel decides it's ninety-nine years unless Seitel, you know, terminates it. But it doesn't say that it had to be done by July thirty-first. And the way this reads and everything else I've read, it looks like it can still be done if those title issues are resolved or whatever the title issues were, should still be able to be redone, be done. This doesn't say that it had to be done by that date. It said it was expected to be done reasonably by that day. But I still think that there's something there that they, I don't know.
And so the day after the council approved that resolution, there was an amendment that was executed between the parties that established the provision for trying to get it all cleared up as soon as possible, and if it couldn't be done, that a long-term lease would be entered into by the parties.
That should have been then authorized or agreed to by the council.
Never came back with a.
Or the council should have been told, we have issues, what do you wanna do?
You used a word of ethics being involved, and there are some things that, within the profession, that can be handled as far as the ethics of this situation, and we could and, and we could pursue those if...
We're gonna discuss this in further depth at the next meeting, is it correct with these questions and stuff?
Well, yes, well, I'm sure, you know, parking, parking lots...
I don't need to get into them right now, I guess, till we get...
Yeah. Parking lots are like the wage and classification study, it's a gift that keeps on giving around here. So, but it's so important that we know the facts, that's where we are before we decide to branch and decide what, what our action is, but to know where we stand, sit.
I'll dig through what I can find, is, see if I can actually find a copy of the title report, so we can see all of those things.
That was the question, was there title issues on every single parking lot? They were all different transactions, that was just...
And if, well, any other questions, comments?
And just, what, find out what was wrong with the title. Figure what, what, what problem does Cytel have with it? You know, woulda, coulda, shoulda, at the time, right now, we're here. Figure out what Cytel had wrong with it, do they go wanna buy it? I mean, are we stuck with it? Do they not wanna buy it?
I mean, I don't know if it was necessarily the title, it may have been part of the boundary survey that was done, there may have been some issues as far as overlaps or different things, I, I'll, I'll do some more digging for you.
I think it was a Cytel preference, and they let it go.
And that...
And we, we, somebody collectively, that's my guess.
Hugh?
I change the subject. Sixty-axis highway. When the city purchased that, was it through like a USDA program? What sort of stipulations are on that going forward?
The, basically, we used USDA funds to buy that building and the property, and if we ever sell it, we have to give fair market value back to the USDA.
How much is fair market value?
Well, it was estimated, we, we looked at this last summer as we were going through the, the public safety building review process, and it was estimated that we'd have to pay back about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
So, the tax assessment on that building with somebody buying it, is it more than what we'd be getting for a lease? Or is it less?
I'll see if we can...
Penny, I like the GIS map, by the way, it's awesome.
So, these are, these are two thousand sixteen numbers that are still available through the internet, we're still trying to figure out how to get them updated, but the total assessment, eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. And then multiply that by our current meal rate. So, that'd be about twenty thousand dollars a year.
And we get, well, what's, seven, five hundred...
Apparently, we get less than...
Right now, we're getting, right now, we're getting about twelve thousand, two hundred.
We should put it up for sale, if we can get that much for it, we pay the USDA the other half.
Yeah.
And then we tax it, and we don't have to worry about it.
Put it up for fourth, or four hundred thousand, or four hundred fifty thousand, get it back on the tax roll, and, and if I was Jacob O'Prey, I'd be a little angry that somebody's only paying a hundred dollars a month for eight thousand square feet when poor Jacob's paying, he's getting, what, twenty-five hundred square feet, and he's paying twenty-one hundred dollars? That's rough.
So, also, the, we did incorporate this year, each of the lease agreements talked about that they would be paying for their utilities, or portion of utilities, and so in working with Carl, we started sending out bills in two thousand eighteen to help cover the cost of power, and I know that's been a point of concern with the, with a couple of the tenants, is that they hadn't been receiving those, I don't know if they'd not been receiving those bills before, or it was something that they, they weren't anticipating, even though it was in their lease agreements to, to do that.
Hugh?
Can we put it on the agenda for next meeting? Kind of parameters of selling it and kind of as a discussion and possible action item for next meeting? Is that okay?
Yeah, I just have one question, would that affect the grant? There was a grant given that building, that...
That was the grant, was to purchase the building, and that was the stipulation, is if we, if we sell it.
So, three-eight covers everything?
Well, it's basically gonna be fair market value, whatever we're able to probably sell it for, we're gonna have to give it back to USDA.
Well, so even if we sell it for eight hundred thousand, we gotta give it up to eight hundred thousand?
I'll, I'll double check the terms, but if we, whatever the fair market value is, that's, we bought it for fair market value, and they're to be returned for market value.
Put it up for bid, and a bidder comes in at two hundred thousand. Is that fair market value?
We'd have, whatever we, however we sell it, we have to sell it under the terms of the USDA stipulations, and so we'll, we'll go through that process, see what we have to do to actually list it for sale and...
Oh, and when we discuss it.
Right, and we discuss it.
Okay.
Okay, okay, so on the agenda for March, if I understand the request, on the agenda for March twenty-fifth, is it? We will have a five-minute explanation of what it would take. We can always put it out to bid, what, what happens to our obligation? What it is that we have to do? Okay. Any other questions?
Um, one more thing, Mayor, the wood pellet boilers. The only one that's working is the rack, right? The only one out of them all. And has our lawyer, Mr. Solomon, gone through and seen what we can do about this, is there anything? I just gotta ask it one last time. Is there anything that can be done about these boilers not working, 'cause only one works? And that's sitting right over the rack.
I've not asked our attorney to go through all the contracts at this point. We could have them spend the time to do that.
I believe Austin did, went through pretty extensively. I believe he did. Yeah, but we, we didn't, we, didn't we go through and try to figure out if there's repercussions? If we could go back to the finance company and... Yeah, you, you can't do it. It wasn't, it wasn't, it didn't... You can't do it. We can't do it, we, we looked into it, though, I believe.
So, we're stuck with this, and this is just the way of life, and next time, we'll just be a little bit more vigilant.
I think that's how it was left, but...
I believe the company's out of business.
The manufacturer.
Manufacturer.
Ma'am, make a suggestion. As I understand it, several of the pellet boilers have had different contractors look at them. I don't know, Gary, you had like Honeywell has helped you out with yours, or who's helped you out with yours?
We figured it out ourselves.
Okay, so you've had nobody. I think Kevin Adams has spent time on the one at the fire station. Who, has he looked at this one?
Kevin's done this one.
And this one, how about the library?
I don't think, they, they haven't had a problem with libraries shut down.
Anyway, so my, my suggestion is, is to get one contractor, one entity, to look at all of them, and get like a maintenance contract, so they come in, they do an annual clean-in service, and you get one person that gets kind of the corporate knowledge of that product. And they're the only ones that look at it. So, if Gary has a problem, that same person comes and look at it, same person comes and looks at this one. As I understand, that's never been done here. Everyone's kind of gone at it on their own, by each building, and that's really no way to solve a problem. Is that something that...
We can reach out to, and get a bid for companies to come and do it.
I, I can suggest my, my old company, Mechanical Services, that's something they could do, I think Depp River could do that as well, maybe even Daigle could do that, you could get three bids, you know, you'd have to walk them all through, and get like a service contract.
I think Chief Susie has expressed that his wood pellet boilers in about a thousand pieces. Is that the truth, or is that what's going on? I heard that it was in, it was in disarray.
I don't believe they've stripped any of it out.
No, I, I heard it was in rough shape.
Because...
We did say that the hopper was rusted.
Okay.
We can put an RFP out and see who responds.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments? Well, Counselor Gahn's got a couple. Last year, I asked the same question on these pellet boilers, something similar to Tom and Hugh, and you gave us a stick, and in that stick, they had, in fact, I remember, hired someone and came up and did an assessment, and went through each boiler, and told each pellet boiler, and told us what was wrong with each one. So, I would ask you to reference the documents that we already have in-house to see if you can find that. I don't remember the name of the company that was brought up here to evaluate it. If they work or don't work, we can't break the lease, has been told to me, and it's not a lease, now, it's something else. Can we sell them? You know? If we're not using them, and they're broke, they must have some value to some person. We can always reject the bids if they go out.
Well, we should save some spare parts for exit.
I don't know, you might get some bad juju there, I would, uh...
Okay.
Let Gary do his thing. Yeah, is, the reason why you're not running yours, Hope, is just...
I just pulled it, it hasn't run since the ordinance issued it, Gary.
Yeah, was the price of fuel went down?
Okay, so... So, we're just not...
But I completely offer money to Gary, free of charge.
They just gotta haul it. Oh, don't, no, no, make him haul it.
And he can have all my wood pellets, too. It's a two-for-one deal.
Okay, and the second thing I wanted to say is, now, what is the correct terminology that we're gonna use going forward with the wood pellet boilers and the fire engine? What, what's the term? It's not a lease, it's a loan. This is the loan.
Then you own it at the end of the lease, then, that is a lease.
So, it is a lease.
Yes.
No?
It's a debt.
It's a loan, or it could be called a lien, they're called lien holders when the banks use them for a car for, but a lease is something that you turn in, or you terminate, a lease is a...
A lease can be written to own at the end of the lease, though.
Right, but that is not the way, those are just debts, those are...
Nicole's right, we, we'll own these at the end of the lease, and so it's, they are technically leases.
But you don't have to...
By terminology, but the effect is the same as a, as a debt, as a loan.
And this is my point, how confusing this, such a simple thing can be, before we get into it. Our charter says that we will not buy anything. Now, I'm gonna go out on a limb here, I think it says over five hundred thousand dollars unless we put it out to a vote, to the voters to vote on. Neither this wood boiler, pellet boiler, or the fire engine went out to vote to the Caribou citizens.
Well, the, the charter allows us to replace equipment without having to put it out to vote, and so in that sense, the fire engine didn't have to go out to vote. However, the pellet boiler system, arguably, that could be new, or you could say it was just replacing the current heating systems that we had. I understand your concern, but...
This goes away from the, the cons, I'm, I'm right back to the concept of how things get started, the CIP program. And we're supposed to have the money to at least pay a majority, we're supposed to be saving money so that when we go into these things, we're not out there spending the kind of monies that we're spending. And the charter, now, technically, legally, it's the intent of, of what the charter says, and, and why don't, and I'm just curious to why we, as a community, don't err on the side of caution when we interpret what our charter says. It is a new piece of equipment, it's a new, I think it was a new fire truck, a ladder truck.
No, no.
No?
It wasn't the ladder truck?
No, that would be a million.
Okay, it was a new truck, yes, it's replacing it, but I still think the voters should've had a say in whether to spend this kind of money on this project, and it's a technicality, we don't even know what to call this thing. A lease, a loan, a debt, alls I know is, we're spending a hundred and twenty, approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, and I don't see the payback at all. I, I just, it dumbfounds me. Tax dollars aren't that easy to come by that we can start spending this kind of money without knowing what's going on. And at the very least, ask the Caribou citizens what they think about it. I have a big problem with this whole thing, with this lease deal. No, it's not a lease, it's a loan. No, it's not a loan, it's whatever we wanna call it.
Call it something different, so people don't assume that we're leasing equipment.
So, definitely, there's a, I understand the concern, if, if it's gonna be a, a major expense, do the citizens vote on that, or does the, does the charter, and I'm sure, I wasn't here when this one went out, but I'm sure the lawyers looked at, does the charter allow for you to go into this situation, and this type of payment arrangement? So, with any major purchase like this, if we're going to, you know, for instance, start replacing all the cruisers in one year, well, that's, you know, thirty-five thousand dollars for each cruiser at least, and that's going up, as I understand it. But as a city, then we can say, well, we're going to, in the capital improvement plan, we're gonna put aside thirty-five thousand dollars every year for the next five years, so we can cover that in one big fell swoop, or do we enter into this type of a payment arrangement so that we still budget thirty-five thousand dollars a year, but we actually can use the equipment, we make the payments on it, and we're able to have that now, rather than waiting for an extra five years when things are really falling apart? It's the same idea with the, the fire engine, regardless of how it was financed, right, right now, we could've waited another five years and just built it into the capital improvement budget to put money aside every year until we could've paid for all this in cash, or, depending on the life of the equipment, enter into this type of a payment, get the equipment now, we're still putting the same money aside, but we're now able to use the equipment, and we don't have to worry about the, the mechanics and the maintenance and everything else on the older system. It, it really is a balance, whenever you have a major purchase, is, are we at that threshold now where it's gonna cost us more to maintain the old one versus having the new one and begin making our capital improvement payments toward the actual equipment, rather than setting it aside, and a saving, and a lot of savings in capital, though, necessarily, but, so...
And I, and I, and I agree with you wholeheartedly, but what would it have hurt to ask the citizens of Caribou what they think?
And, and that's...
To this process, to the process that you're saying. Why not engage the citizens of Caribou? If the citizens of Caribou had been engaged in the pellet boiler, maybe some of these flaws might've showed up before the big purchase was made. We ask people to come in and speak fifteen minutes every meeting, say whatever you want. That's a big purchase. And I just, I just don't see what, what, what the harm would've been to ask. I, I just hope... I, I just hope, number one, we get terminology down when we do things in the future, and number two, we just err on the side of caution. And engage everybody to these major purchases. These, these are not thirty or forty-five thousand dollar cars.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions on the subject before we move on?
If I'm right, Eric, it really is up to the council when these things come up. You as a council decide what's gonna go up to the citizens for a vote or?
No, and I, I disagreed and it's, the charter says what's gonna go to a vote and I'm not sure. I agree with the interpretation that you, that you've been given about the fire truck and about the pellet boilers. I always assumed it was because it was a lease. That somehow we got around that stipulation in the charter. But now I'm learning, it's not a lease.
It, it's a debt obligation.
A debt obligation, there's the key, and in the charter it says if we're gonna go into debt over five hundred thousand dollars, you go to a vote.
For new equipment.
And that was new equipment. You're, we can split hairs all night, Dennis.
I know.
Okay, I'm just telling you my opinion. And you weren't here, I get it. Thank you. This is on the budget for this coming year. I'm sure we're gonna not necessarily talk about the fact that we have to pay it or don't have to pay it. But it's gonna show up as a line item. And we have to pay it. Thank you. I don't mean to get long-winded. I apologize to you. I, I just, it frustrates me solo. This kind of thing frustrates me when we don't even know what to call it. Okay, number seven. This is the manager's report.
So just quickly, uh, major projects that we have going right now, the LED streetlight, we've. We did receive our information back from Amera. We've asked Real Term to update their numbers and get it back to us for a final report to you as a council, we're waiting on that. I know that there are other communities this week that are, are deciding to pull the trigger or not with Real Term. And, uh, and I should be able to, at our next meeting, be able to give you an update on where the other communities are sitting with regards to the same process in their towns. With the River Road, I received this afternoon. The preliminary drawings for the River Road, I haven't had a chance to review those yet. I do have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday at two o'clock. To review those with the staff and with representatives of the utilities. So that we can go through those and see if there's any conflicts that need to be addressed. And then we'll get those comments back to Dubois and King for them to fix those. Then they'll take those comments back, modify the plans accordingly, and we should be getting closer to getting that estimate. A, a more firm estimate, engineers estimate on the cost for the work. Uh, High Street, the bids have gone out, the bid closing date is March twentieth. So we should know, uh, soon thereafter if, uh, you, uh, DOT is gonna move forward with the work. If they say yes, we're gonna move forward, that's when the city will put out its bid for our side of the work that needs to be done. Uh, Birds Eye Cleanup, we've made application for roughly five hundred thousand dollars of cleanup grants. From the EPA. We've already fielded some questions on the application. We haven't, so far we haven't received a notice that it's been denied. Just on the technicalities of the application itself, and so that's a good sign that it will be considered. And then, uh, we have the Senior Homestead Tax Credit Program, which the council. Uh, had discussed bringing that back for policy discussion at some point this year. And so we just need to. It really is at a point now where the council needs to decide what are gonna be some of the thresholds for that program if you wanna move forward with it. And actually, if you wanna fund it this year. The indication was to put fifty thousand dollars toward that program this year. But as we get closer and closer to June, July. May give us opportunity to pause and, and revisit that if we wanna. Put those monies out this year for that. The other thing you wanted to, I guess I did pass out to the council, some historic data on the budget. As far as the revenues and expenses that have come in over the years, or at least since two thousand twelve. And. Let me, uh, put this up on the screen and, and also flip over to. That's what goes out in the. And the city can see this information as well.
My lawyer?
No.
By the way, the, the TV, I understand, has been working great.
We test it every morning. Uh, Dana Thompson of, um, Meadow Oscar Road is my.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you very much, and. Thank everyone else.
Thank you, Dana Thompson.
Well, I think it's great.
So the information that was passed out included back to two thousand eleven on the, the net revenues. Of the general accounts, and then these are the accounts that we can spend on multiple departments. There's no. Uh, real strings attached to those funds. And then I've also provided the net of all accounts, so that's the general accounts and the enterprise accounts. You can see that there's a lot of fluctuation. In the, the nets between the, the fund revenues versus fund expenses. Back in two thousand eleven, we had, uh, the general accounts. Ended up the year at a negative three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars roughly. The net of all of the accounts actually brought that up a little bit, meaning that we had, uh, less loss. In the enterprise accounts, which helped to bring that up just a little bit. Uh, still a, a significant loss for that year in two thousand eleven. In two thousand twelve, again, the general accounts were slightly under as far as the net, twenty thousand dollars under. And, uh, the net of all of the counts in two thousand twelve was about thirty-six thousand dollars to the positive. Then, uh, you can see over the years it varies. In two thousand sixteen. And that was the year that, uh, the audit report showed that we had over, over four hundred thousand dollars in, in monies left over. In two thousand seventeen, uh, we, we also had a good sum. But just comparing again, these are the nets between the revenues and the expenses. Uh, this, these two charts illustrate for you the revenues on the left side. And the sources of those revenues in the different colors. Those same colors correspond to the chart on the right. Showing you the expenses. And so these are, these numbers or these numbers that I'm showing are only for the general accounts, not the enterprise accounts. And so you can see that, uh, for the revenues. For the general accounts, the, the ten or the general government funds. Are making up the majority of the revenue for the city. Uh, the other major income for the city comes through the tax assessing department. And that is primarily the reimbursements that we're getting from the state for Betty and Homestead and veterans. The state is a, a major contributor of revenue for that. And then the other major contributor in revenue is the EMS department, firing EMS department. Okay, uh, you'll notice that over, well, since two thousand eleven, the EMS portion of that. Has gone down slightly. Again, part of that is the issues that we're having with the health industry and the amount of reimbursement that we're getting. Uh, there's a bill being considered right now in the legislature that would mandate the reimbursement amount to be increased. For our services, and so hopefully that will get passed and, and we should be able to see. That income going up more than what it has. We'll, there'll be less subsidizing of that service. On the right again is the, our expenses. You can see that the, the general government expenses, even though they bring in a lot of the revenue. The general government, which is primarily administrative expenses, is very little compared to the overall. But we do have, uh, Fire EMS, uh, Public Works is, uh, another large one, as well as the, the Police Department. Are the, the three largest expenses that we have in the city. So. Just, uh, by way of information, I guess, and if you have any questions.
Any questions?
Comments?
You got my request? Or the same information back to nineteen ninety-four? Well, this information's in Trio.
Just for. Three to four different accounts.
Yeah, this information was really available in Trio. Go back that far, I don't, you might have to go back to the hard copies of the audits. I don't think we've got any other database to go to. So it'll take us some while to dig that out.
If you can get oh-four quickly, I would take that. If you just need to take a little more time to get ninety-four, oh-four, that'd be fine.
Any other questions or comments?
This in general or the manager's report?
Oh. In general.
So on the manager's report, can you, I got four items to add. The first one being site help parking lots.
So I'm trying to get us back to the.
Right. Which I think to, to Dave's point, I think is a reason. We kinda wanted to have this running tab of open issues, so. Things like the site help parking lot don't, don't get dropped. I think last year we had, didn't we have another issue like this with the, uh, employee? Uh, employee payment in two weeks instead of one, which again, never. Never materialized from the previous management. Anyway, so can you also add selling of sixty-axis highway? RFP for pellet boilers. And then another one that hasn't come up in a while is the, uh, park next to Burger Boy selling that. That's kinda something that's been out there that.
Do you wanna make a dog park out of that?
That's all I got. You are, you got it? Okay, Tom.
Um, going on the LED street light conversion, um. I'd just like to request, maybe, uh, Ken can look it up, um, that dark skies community. Look into that, cuz that's something that maybe would be pretty neat to bring to Caribou. We're gonna redo all these lights and. You, do you have something to add?
I did, I found out that apparently the lights we have chosen do qualify.
They're full cutoff lights?
They're full cutoff lights. I think that would be something neat we can advertise and something else to put on the sign, you know, for Caribou.
So can I dovetail on that with Tom? When I was on vacation, I spoke to a friend of mine that I worked with in California. He works for a company that. Does these streetlight conversions exclusively all throughout the country. And he provided, uh, three. Three pieces of information that would be helpful to us. Uh, whatever light we, uh, choose, it should be the lowest color temperature, twenty-seven hundred K. He highly recommended we do test installs. The more, the better.
Excuse me, do what?
Uh, test installations. Yeah, and, and what he suggested was not only. To do as many as possible, but, but in the different color temperatures so people can see. See the difference and, uh, to use cutoffs on the fixtures wherever possible. Because these are so much brighter that you're gonna have lights lighten up people's fronts and backyards. And you tend to get complaints.
Now, the previous, uh, direction from the council was to not do any test installs.
This is new information.
If, if that's the direction the council wants to go, we can, we can tell them to do it.
I think we need to hear back from America, uh, Amera, and, um, you guys kinda formulate something and then. When we get to that point, we get to that point. See what this council would like to do.
I think Re- Real Term left the option open for test installations, right?
Yeah. And I just have one more thing. Um, on the High Street deal, you said, uh, if, uh. Main DOT decides to do it or not do it, uh, what happens if they don't do it? What happens if they say, well, geez, we, we're overbid again and we can't do it this year? What happens then? Dave?
I go to, uh, Office County Quick Print. I get cards made. Phone numbers of our legislators. Partner DOT people, all the way up to the governor, and I'm gonna purchase these myself and I'm gonna hand them out. And I'll give everybody that wants to hand them out. When you get a question on it, call these people. Cuz that's what we've been doing for fifteen years, so.
Do you think somebody will let us borrow an airplane and we can just throw them out of the airplane all over Caribou? This is serious. What are we gonna do if DOT doesn't? I mean, and Dave's right. Go to our politicians, okay?
People are getting radical here.
I know, I know, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
Any other, any other issues? Okay, um. Ha- have we talked to a local electrician about these streetlights?
You'd ask me to sit down and have lunch with him. I know that that particular contractor. Has been awarded the bid through Real Term if we move forward with the project. I've not personally visited with him yet, but I know they've been contacted about this and, and the work.
Okay. Could we have, uh, a proposal then on? I don't know, how many test lights would the council feel comfortable with?
It costs extra, doesn't it, to have test installs?
What, 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 what was the different spectrums, uh, uh? The, uh, light colors?
Color, yeah, color temperature.
Color temperatures, well, how many different ones are there?
I, I think it goes up to. No, I think it goes up to like.
Well, I know in the light spectrum, yes, but.
Seven, seventy-five hundred, maybe eight, eight thousand. Uh, but, but the higher you go, the more white and antiseptic it gets. Um, and, uh, the general public tend to doesn't, they tend to not like that. They like the warmer.
Okay, how about if we try then, four areas with three lights in each area? Is that too much?
Twelve lights?
No, that's, that's probably good. Twelve lights too many to have installed if it doesn't cost us anything.
Doesn't cost us anything.
Uh, and, uh.
Do you have permission to put one in my yard?
And, uh, place them throughout. The community at different corners.
I'll also check with Amera, cuz I know that they're now installing. With all of their new light installs, and so they may already have some installed at certain.
Yeah.
Certain brightnesses, but we'll, we'll get back with Real Term and we'll, we'll see if we can figure out how to get some side by side.
There's gotta be three, three of the most common ones.
Right.
Three of the most common ones.
Like say twenty-seven hundred K, thirty-five hundred K.
It's not gonna be over six hundred.
May I, can you see the, the light that they put down at the end of the River Road when you go by? I haven't been down there after dark.
Yeah.
But that's an LED, what did you?
I think it looks great.
Okay, is there enough light there or is?
It is for me.
So that get, that'll give you something to go buy.
Yeah, I think it looks great, but it's not out, you know, I'm just curious, it's gonna be outside, someone's, listen. Everyone has talked about how dark this town is.
Oh, I know, yeah.
We light it up, we're gonna get complaints of how bright it is. We light it up, we're gonna get complaints of how bright it is. Yeah, so, you know.
And that really is kind of balanced to the dark sky issue is.
Right.
The, the greatest contributor to light pollution are streetlights.
Hmm. And I, like you, yeah.
It's not necessarily the streetlights shining up, there actually is the reflectance from the ground of the light going back up into the sky. It causes some problems.
Yeah.
Correct. And I think that's where the color comes in, like Huey was mench, Hue was mentioning and things, so.
Good God, man.
Four spots around town. Three lights in each spot.
My guess is they would say, we'll, we'll take one spot and we'll put three different lights up on one spot so you can see the difference looking down the street. I don't know that they would do four different locations.
Let's just see what, let's see what they'll say. We have a little, a money in account, uh, and if we have to cut it back to two spots, fair enough. But let's start with four. Let's see. River Road, High Street. Anything else? Thank you, Dennis. Before leaving the subject though, I just looked at my notes. And you showed some nice charts. I liked the actual expenses versus the projected expenses spreadsheet that you accompanied those charts with. And they're, they're, um, interesting reading as far as to know where you're going, it's great to know where you've been. I need someone in the very near future to explain to me the ambulance situation. I know Mr. Aiken, former Mayor Aiken, had a study done or did a, and said that, um, well, I'm not sure what he said, but could we dig that out and see what those facts and figures showed? Because according to the numbers, they've changed considerably over the last two years. Talking about possibly expanding. And I'm not sure expanding is the answer. Talking about building possibly a new public safety building. And, um, I'll be quite frank, I don't understand these numbers. To why we would either expand projecting to lose almost nine hundred thousand dollars in the fire and ambulance department. Why would we get bigger? Why not at least look at the possibility? My ultimate goal would be, can we just look at what it would cost us to serve the people of Caribou? And I guess, to put it in my farmer terms, can we not lose as much money? But I gotta see how Gary, how former counselors went about analyzing the numbers first. I thank Hugh's request for having, I have a ni, this is a nice graph, but it covers five years. If we could cover ten or fifteen years, just to see where we're going. It really concerns me that the state isn't reimbursing us. Or the federal government, I don't know which one's not reimbursing us.
Probably both.
Both.
Yeah. That figures.
Not as much as we would like.
In the, all the years I've been here, every four or five years, this comes up. Where they start lagging behind and then Congress kicks in more money. That's the history. Where they're at this again.
Just the, the numbers you gave us, it's been a, a drastic seven-year trend. Goes down every year.
I'm not the type of person that trusts, and I, I understand what you say, but I just assume I don't want to trust government. That they're gonna reimburse us. We had the went through the expansion of, uh, medical services and I guess, I, I, I guess, you heard how ho, how debt the hospitals got into because they weren't getting reimbursed. And our former governor paid up those bills. I guess. He got a lease. Pardon? He got a lease. What does that mean?
Liquor drunk.
Okay, but suppose you have a governor that doesn't wanna do that. And, uh, our primary concern should be for the citizens of Caribou. Plain and simple. If we put together a good, well-oiled machine plan for that concept, no services are gonna be interrupted for, for the citizens of Caribou. But why are we sending? It hasn't been proven to me that, that, that spreading out has, has cured any of our problems. Matter of fact, I might even say it's contributed to the problems that we're facing. But I have to see the numbers first.
Mr. Mayor, can I just ask one more thing real quick? This is the one you just gave us. This is the one you gave us last meeting, what's the difference? We were, last time we talked, you said we were ten thousand short of revenue from last year. Am I, am I correct in saying that? Carl, yes, maybe so.
I apologize, I haven't seen you in a while, Steve.
This one right here? I'm just going back and forth and some of the numbers just aren't lining up. You have projected revenue for two thousand nineteen on the first one you showed us was, uh, uh, ten million, three fifty-two thousand, forty-seven, and on this one you got ten million, three forty-seven, nine oh-five.
Well, the difference is that.
Capital improvements or?
You have the actual revenue council approved is now in those numbers. And then we also have, I believe, the earlier spreadsheet.
From two weeks ago?
From two weeks ago, uh, we had some other things that were not, that were perpetuated in the spreadsheet, they're not correctly.
So our revenue went down?
From?
Last, the last meetings. Yeah, from the last meetings to this one, our revenue went down? I'm just trying to get it straight in my head. So.
Tom, I've also been confused. And it, it's, it's how the budget process works in my understanding of it. That's why I asked to have that latest one published. It shows all the actual, they're actual numbers. And it shows what the council has voted on for a projection.
I just.
So.
Somebody along the way in my life has always said, if you can't measure it, you can't manage it. And right now, I'm seeing a little inconsistency in the measuring. And maybe it's just me, maybe I'm just too novice at this thing yet, but.
Partly is that every time that we, you ask for an updated spreadsheet, we have an additional month's worth of data to go into it.
Well, this is an additional two weeks, you know?
I can, I can attest to what Dennis is talking about, they're, they're living, breathing documents.
No, I get it.
They're not static, so, I get it.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, item number eight. Reports and discussion by mayor and council members. Well, the mayor last on eight A, it's economic development priorities. I went on a little bit of a tirade on my definition of economic development, don't have to repeat it. I wanted to give every, any counselors a chance. Before Dennis and I meet this coming, next two weeks, we're gonna meet and put together pie, which is, consists of the mayor's job description and the goals that we would like to set him. It will be our first, and, and when I meet with Dennis, we'll put it together from what we've heard. And we'll come back with the first draft for council to review. And get the ball rolling. And the whole purpose of this was, when we get to December, the first meeting in December, we get to job evaluate the city manager's position with things that the council actually said we'd like to have done or have the manager go in that direction. Anybody got any comments before we do that?
My only comment is, when I took economics in college, which wasn't that long ago, it's all gonna come in a circle. Circle of economics. And it comes right down to the services that we can provide, the existing businesses in this town. I mean, the, the golden goose is not gonna fly in here tomorrow. And, uh, I hope it does, but I don't think it will. We need between the city and the services we can offer, the citizens that move up here, the schools. People wanna make sure their kids are going to good schools. And everything that encompasses that, people spending money here in Caribou. You know, spending money at Hannaford for produce and all their goods and clothing at sleepers or clothing here, clothing there. Um, it all has to encompass that circle to keep the money here. That's, I just want Mr. Mayor and Dennis to keep that in mind. And, and we need to look at each facet of that. We need to look at what the city does, what the schools does. What are we offering these businesses? How are we gonna make it easier for them to do business in Caribou? And that's a big thing to me.
Thank you, Tom. So. Oh, sorry. Uh, so I wasn't here the last meeting when Mark kind of put this out to everyone to, uh, talk about their definition of economic development. So I try to keep mine rather simple, and that's growing the assessed value of everything within the city, all the properties, residential, commercial. And if you get that, using that pie analogy again, going in a positive direction, we're at like a three hundred and thirty-five million dollar valuation now, I think. If that starts going up, instead of going down, and you keep your budget relatively flat, then you can lower the mill rate. And it's really that simple. If the assessed values go down, your budget stays flat, then you gotta raise the mill rate to keep up. And, uh, so I kind of feel like it's a big part of our job to do things that make it easier for the assessed value of all the properties to go up. And that's being inviting to businesses coming in, like new businesses that wanna start up. At, at the very least, getting out of their way, if not helping them in some way. So that's kind of, that's, that's the way I look at it.
I'm kind of echoing some of theirs, I wrote my own notes and I love it, it's what they're talking about. Being a busy, business-friendly community, allowing people to begin business here, um, but also focusing on family-friendly activity and enhancing the businesses that we already have and, and ensuring that they have what they need to continue to be successful. If we want our community to grow, making people realize why they should live in Caribou, obviously, is going to increase our economy. So sometimes, um, that affects what businesses we might be wanting to attract. But, um, to continue to grow our community, we need young families. So focusing on those types of businesses, activities that we already offer through the city and making sure that people know um, all of the opportunities and then working with the facade improvements, which I know is something on the plate for this year, but making our city beautiful so that people want to come here.
High Street would go along, I would.
That would be phenomenal, yes. Yes, and lights and side lots and all kinds of.
Lights would go good there, that's right, you're right. Judy?
Uh, I guess I'll go back to the, what I said back of the candidate forum, you gotta, you gotta help with existing businesses, what's here, you gotta build your base. Um, you, you lose a business, you gain a business or lose one, it's in that loss. I mean, we, we need to attract new businesses, obviously, but, and as a city, we're also somewhat limited on tools that we can use to economic develop. We can do TIFs, I mean, we can change ordinances, but it's not. I think we're can't do everything for everybody, we can do what we have the resources to do, you know, to help. I mean, we can't, we can't stand on Route One and say, come here and, and go put a shop there, you can't do that, if you wish you could. There has to be, so, I guess, I'll go back to the, you know, you gotta work on the base, what we got here, hopefully, when I will expand with the tools we have available, whether it's the facade, as you mentioned, for the summer. And like you've mentioned, uh, as simple as an ordinance could make a difference on a business coming here. Or some verbiage in a in other aspects, so.
Anybody else?
Uh, for me, it's just, again, yes, you got, you need businesses, you need to keep them here, but I think it's the quality of life that we have in this town as well. The lifestyle, the infrastructure, uh, the housing, the jobs, the technology that we have. We wanna make this like, I think it was Nicola said, to make this a really nice place in which to live, so that you have the services that they need. And it's not just where you can go buy your groceries and your clothes, but the hospital, for instance, bringing in more qualified cardiologists perhaps, or something, if you can, you know, uh, do something along here so that people can live here and not have to travel so many miles, or, uh, I know people that have not moved here because they can't get the medical care and the, and that they need and just, just the well-being, the social well-being, as well as the economic growth and sustainable growth, if we can get the lifestyle that people like and want to live in this. We can't do anything about the climate, but we sure can, we can help them in other ways if possible. The school is a, is a big one, the school is a big, a big plus and things like that. Another Dunkin' Donuts would.
Two or three.
Anybody else?
Okay, thank you very much. Like I said, uh, Dennis and I, some of, some of the points, Tom, to bring up to your point, I, I think part of the one aspect that maybe answer that question would be is, we're hoping that Dennis will go out and interview or talk to or take the lunch businessmen and women throughout our community privately. We're not asking Dennis to, who said what or anything like that. But come to the end of the year, hopefully, we, I think our goal was one a month. So hopefully, at the end of the year, we have eleven or twelve reports that Dennis could then give us a summary of, which could answer some of the questions.
Also to welcome the new business.
And welcome, yeah.
To restaurant and a daycare.
Yeah.
And the daycare, yes.
Well, that brings up a good point. I, I already have a couple of names that I would like to submit that he would go visit. If any other counselors have any names of businessmen or women or, and like, as we mentioned, even if you're just building a new house. Not, not even, I mean, that's a big deal, if you build a new house. Right, uh. I, uh, I know every farmer in town, every sled dealer. The others are not interested. I've asked certain business people and some are, are willing to do it, and some said, no way. They don't wanna get involved. Afraid of the Paul. Afraid of the politics, or whatever it is, and, and uh, I, I assured them, it was supposed to be a, it's a confidential lunch, and, and uh. But they still are a little wary, so.
Yeah, well, we could help, I mean, I could set up five or six different people, but.
And that's, that's what we're, and that's what we're looking for. Uh, if we could screen them before we give the names to Dennis, so. Their, their, Dennis isn't getting. They, they know what's coming out of them, yeah, so, okay, thank you very much, everyone. Uh, number nine, reports from staff, boards, and committees.
Good evening, I'd like to introduce the, a new assistant city clerk who's patiently waited, for over two hours to be introduced. It's Danielle McLaughlin. And uh, she has worked since the day after President's Day, um, learning all the ins and outs of um. Connie's position. But she's not only learning motor vehicle, she is learning, um, because she has the title of assistant city clerk, she's learning all aspects of my job. That's one of the reasons for her to be here this evening. Um, she went to training today with me for public access, so who knows, maybe a year from now, she could be the one giving the presentation for training for council. But anyway, Danielle McLaughlin, we've been very happy, it's nice uh, to have, um, well, compared to the three of us, a young whippersnapper in the office.
Welcome, Roger.
Excuse me, oh, April eighth, Connie Michelle, please um, attend people in the public, I hope we run out of food, there will be so many people here. Um, saying, um, they're, good luck and best wishes to Connie, the sign is right here, um, and we are. You'll have an invitation in your mailbox, and um, there are flyers out in the public, and um, truly, um. We will party hearty that day in the afternoon, for her thirty-three years in one day, for Connie Michelle. That's April eighth, two to four.
I showed up the eighth, it was the wrong month. So.
Yeah, nice.
Yeah, I did.
You had your own party.
I, no, there was no cake.
It's a Friday, she's not, her last day is not a, um, it is not a Friday, excuse me, it is a Monday, it's her last day, so it wasn't. It's a Monday, because as she says, um, that is the end of a pay period, and her anniversary is actually the seventh. And so that is the end of a pay period, and she gets that thirty-three days, and thirty-three years in one day. Does she get to go home early? Um, I don't think there will be much work being done by Connie that day. The manager has been most gracious, uh, to allow us to close for one hour to have a potluck, and that was what she asked for, was a potluck. Um, the reception in the afternoon was what I asked of her, and it didn't take much, uh, you know, I had my arm pushing that. Pushing her arm up in the middle of her back, but she agreed to it, it was a little bit, moved up. But she really wanted a potluck with the bill, people in the building, and that's what we're doing, and so we will be closed from twelve to one, so we can have a potluck. On that day. And I appreciate that, Dennis.
Any other reports?
Karl, comments?
Go ahead. Can I congratulate Dennis on uh, his son winning the state basketball?
State basketball championship?
I'll, I'll pass that along to the team. They've, they've had a lot going on with, uh, I think, believe they were at the elementary school and the middle school, taking pictures and all the other kids, and. They love touting that uh, golden ball around town, it's, it's been fun for them. Um, and if you're okay, Mayor, with being on the next agenda, having them come in and, and extend them.
Yeah, okay.
We'll do that then.
We tried, we tried, just a little, we tried to schedule it for this meeting, but there was a conflict of meetings.
Yes.
So we scheduled it for.
Twenty fifth.
The twenty-fifth.
Wear your Viking clothing if you have it.
Yep.
Yep.
Wear your state championship shirt.
Do you?
Wear it by Friday.
Wear it.
Okay.
Or the state championship shirts that were made by Friday.
I wanna say that uh, I had the privilege of going down to uh, Ms. Jordan's preschool daycare, I'm not sure of the exact title. I gotta tell you, I was impressed of not only the investment that these people have made, but the professionalism in which they did it in. It's a great asset for not only Caribou, but it's a heck of an asset for our community. Seeing, or for our downtown, seeing how this investment has been privately made. We talk often in your chart of economic development was one about regulations and making it as easy as possible. We've talked about the facade. Any help, I hope will be met with great interest, that, that's a heck of an investment. And to Jones' point about making a community welcome. I didn't realize it, but babies that are six weeks old can, you can get an application to go there. You then have the ability to take your students to a brand new one through eighth grade school. You have your ability to take your, the students can go to an after-school. Uh, scenario at the rec center with Gary and his staff. I can't believe that profession, any couples, professional couples. That, that, there's, there's two things, there's economic development, and there's marketing what you got. This is one heck of a marketing tool to put this all together, to be very inviting for, for, for any couples, especially professional couples. That wanna move into this community, and we'd be very remiss not to um. Well, grab this bull by the horns and let's uh, make hay with it, those people put a lot of time into that, a lot of thought and time into uh, building that. I would highly recommend it to any citizens of Caribou to take the, take the ten cent tour, it's really nice, anything else? Chair will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Motion to go into executive session. Four oh five six for consultations with the city attorney regarding pending litigation.
Second? Move in second, and all in favor? Motion passes, thank you very much.